Okay, this meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Before we have public comment, I'd just like to note the passing of Barbara Houston, who has been a long-term member of this community and contributing member of this community. She died this week. She served 18 years on the school board.
Wow.
Including the terms as the Chair of the Board. She was the President of the New Hampshire School Board Association. She was for 18 years the Treasurer of the Oyster River School District, married for 68 years to Bob Houston, who was a professor at UNH. And the obituary that talked about her honeymoon was a seven-week bicycle trip through Europe.
Wow.
So, just a tremendous contributor to the community, tremendous person. And we wish send our condolences to Bob, who cared for her during the last four years of her life. So, passing of a real giant. So, public comment?
I'm Dean from Lee. Hey, everybody. Saw the article in the newspaper about declining enrollment, and I would say, don't worry about it too much in the immediate future. And I'll make my point about Lisa's error numbers. Lisa reports what's called the mean-absolute deviation. So, that's sort of the average of how far her numbers are off. Usually, what you get reported is a confidence interval. And I don't want to go into a lot of statistics, but that's usually basically the way you get a confidence interval, is you double those numbers. So, where Lisa says plus or minus 15 percent, there's really, you think, well, it's going to be plus or minus 30 percent is where your answer is going to lie. And that's so big that, again, the future is far away, and if you look at those numbers correctly, very, very unknown. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dean. John? Yeah, come on up.
I'm John Parsons, and I'm here to talk in support of the total athletic field proposal, track and field proposal. And there are a lot of people who have heard presentations about the value of this entire project. I'm not going to go into all of that now. That information has been provided and will be provided again, I'm sure. What I want to do is to list for you some of the numerous people who have supported Friends of Oyster River Track over the years. The track project is the part that I, and as well as Todd Allen and a number of others, have been most involved in as members of Friends of Oyster River Track for an awful long time. And, well, that would be since 1998, almost 17 years. So, I have a list here, and this is just one sheet of paper, of many, many supporters. And so, I'm going to read some of these to you. I'm not going to read a lot of them, because it would take probably half an hour to read the names of all of the people who have contributed to this project over the years. Friends of Oyster River Track started, as I said, in January of 1998. One of our fundraisers was a biometer program, in which we sold more than 250 meters of track at $100 a meter, plus roughly 300 other donors, who gave money for various projects that we had going on, various other efforts. So, I'm going to read a list of some of the people who bought meters, just to show the range of local residents and taxpayers who have supported this project over the years, since its inception. Now, as you would expect with any population over the course of 17 years, some of the people listed here have moved away. Some of the people listed here are deceased. Some of the families are no longer together, the various things that happen over the years. But I'm going to read the names as they appeared on the checks when they arrived with me, because I'm the treasurer. So, the first people on the list are members of Friends of Oyster River Track, because we did grab the first eight meters for ourselves, all paid for. So, I'm not going to read our names off. But from there on, Krista Curtis, Annie Merton, Gail Kelly, Stuart Curtis, the MacArthur Family and Stickman Sports, Walt, excuse me, Jennifer Curtis Noiz, Walter and Alice Druken, they are the parents of Rob Druken, one of the members of Friends of Oyster River Track, Ed and Maria Larkin, Dr. Bragden and Dr. Dugas, John Kuschner and Jay Carroll Wilson, Parsons Electric, that's my brother, Kathleen McCartney, Carolyn Doobie and David Swift, Dan and Kathy Bean, Tom and Beth Newkirk, Don and Gloria Quigley, Leonard and Jean Klein, Ann and Mitch Colter, John and Iris Esteroop, Daniel and Catherine O'Rourke, Douglas and Lisa Roder, Norma and Vernon Reinhold. I've got this timed, so it's not going to take me too long. I did this at home before. Reinhold, Anne Heisey, Bill and Sumatz, Paul and Pamela McGuire, Bob and Barbara Houston, Tad and Kendry Parker, Bud and Betsy Booth, Jerry and Barbara D., Kenny Rotner and Tracy Schrader, is she pronounced? Okay. David and Cynthia Cooper, Hawk Anning and Yue Chin Chang, I think I'm close. Alice Belfiore and Timothy Sherry, the Celentano family, Diane and Frank McGinn, Ted and Jean Vogel, Jonathan and Heather Clark, Mary and Stephen Weglars, Paul Pasternak and Sandra Rodifer, Craig and Susan Seymour, Mark and Barbara Milliken, Janice and Stan Aviza, Mike and Carol Glover, Pat Terrell, the Phantoms Soccer, OR Travel Soccer Association, George and Gail Carey, Paul and Ann Tobori, I'm about three-quarters through what I'm going to read for tonight, Paul and Pam McGuire and Nicole Wojcik, Ashley Heisey, Ed and Andrea Dupont, Lynn and Maggie Bogel, Walter and Dorothy Rentsler, Bill Reeves, Fred and Betty Vermonti, Bob and Sally Hoekling, Matbury Community Club, Charlie and Sandy Blitzer, Sarah and Will Urban, Nancy Pierpont, Ted Hennessy, Don L. Thompson Real Estate, Carden and Ann Welsh, William and Dangene Irvine, Durham Copy, which no longer exists, and Ron Gary, Roland, Jackie and Kate Pomater, the Oyster River Boosters Club, Frisbee Memorial Hospital, New England Homes, Jan Roberts, who is retired, and Beth Redmond, who has long been Beth Stacey, from their fifth-grade class at RMS, Damaris Environmental, John Parsons and Jean Parsons, Rita Morum, Oyster River High School Booster Club, Mark Blackwood and Alyssa Parks. And that's all I'm going to read for tonight, except for one final one, Bernadette Parsons, who bought the shot put circle. That's my mother. And she keeps asking me where this track is. So, I've told her, there's a proposal on the table. We're hoping that this entire project, the track, field, all the entire field project, will get enough support to pass and get built this spring, or next summer, I guess. Thanks. I have to leave.
If somebody wants to give money to Ford, where do they give it to?
Good idea. If you'd like to donate money to Friends of Oyster River Track, you can send it to John Parsons, P-A-R-S-O-N-S, 16 Stevens Way, S-T-E-V-E-N-S, in Durham, 03824. And I guess I would ask if the Board would put that in the minutes, or post it on the Central Office website, wherever. I know it's been posted there before, but I'm glad you asked, because, you know, when I make these appearances, sometimes we get a few checks coming. And so, any money that is donated is going to go directly to the track and field project.
I think we have the start of our campaign, get John's mother off his back.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John. Thanks for your work.
There would be no shot put in this proposal. No?
Okay, approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes for December 3rd?
I motion to approve the minutes for December 3rd.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Are there corrections to the minutes? Sarah?
In the math story parking lot discussion, I would like it put that my little paragraph says, "Sarah Farwell asked for a piece of data, Cecil Hive Water Table," which Jim Rosicky said he would find out for us. "Sarah Farwell raised both functional and aesthetic concerns."
I got it.
So, you have that? Okay, I appreciate you writing that up. With that correction, are there the corrections?
Just in the committee updates, there's just sort of a typo. You used sustainability committee twice. You probably only need to write it in there once.
What page?
Oh, I'm sorry, page...
I'll find it.
Oh, yeah.
Page four.
Page four, great.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Are they correct? Maria?
Under student senate report, I think the name of the representative that was here last time should be mentioned.
That was Steph Schiavo?
Steph Schiavo.
Okay. So, do you have the spelling for that?
I have it. It's in the top.
Yeah, it is in there.
As present?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It wasn't where it was listed, as student senate report, but...
It was in school members present at the...
Okay.
So, you think it should be also in the student senate report?
I thought so, but if it's up top, people can figure out.
Okay, okay, okay. She's identified, yeah. Okay. So, with the two corrections then that people made, are there any others? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes with those two corrections? All of us in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. Announcements and commendations from the district?
I didn't intend to say anything tonight, Dennis Harrington, Mo Hermit. But I just got an email from a staff member, and it sort of reflects a lot of things. Many times I'm up here commending a concert or some special event that has happened. But what I see as a special event in the school, and I suspect it's for most schools, in all the schools in the district, is the daily toil that happens every single day. And at Mo Hermit, over the last few weeks, I've got a lot of support from the superintendent and from the Central Office in weighing a decision about how to use space next year. Nobody agrees on anything. And so, it's left for the principal to make a decision. So, I made one today. And it's not popular, but it's one that I felt needed to be made so we could move forward. And the support that I got from staff right after making that decision is magnificent. They don't agree with, many of them don't agree with me, some of them do. But they've had an opportunity to speak and to lay out different proposals. And the superintendent has been pressing me in a really good way to think carefully about how to make the best decision. It's made. And if you ever get a chance, I mean, the concerts are wonderful. The concert last week, was it this week? I can't remember, was wonderful. But the daily work that it took, that it took to put that concert together is the real beauty. The real beauty in my school, and I suspect in every other school in the district, is the daily toil that the paraprofessionals are engaged in. Most importantly, the teachers are engaged in. And if you get a chance, take an hour and go into each of our schools and watch what's going on. You won't see perfection, but you will see the attempt to be perfect. And I just wanted to take the time to commend my entire staff for the way they interact, for the way they try to find the best solutions for difficult problems, and the way they unite behind the leadership when it's provided.
Thank you, Dennis.
Todd Allen from the high school. Do you want to start, because it's the first meeting we've had since Megan returned from the Nationals. I want to just point out that Megan did a fantastic job, came in 52nd in the country, representing the state of New Hampshire in the Northeast fantastically well. Congratulations, Megan, on that. Great effort. I also wanted to hand out a couple of other commendations. One, Danuta Richards has been coordinating, our school nurse has been coordinating the holiday gift baskets at the high school. It involves all of the classes and all of the teachers, and we have prepared holiday baskets, including gifts and food and all kinds of things, serving dozens of kids and families. So, it's really exciting, and it's just a really wonderful way that we sort of pull together as a school community, leading into the holidays, to do some really nice stuff. I know all of the schools in the district, the school nurses do a lot with that. And I just, since Danuta's mine, I get to brag about her. So, there's that. Third thing I did want to mention, I've told you my opinions about national rankings and so forth before, but when we show up at the top of them, I have to tell you about them. Because when we're not on them, it's just, it's a bad thing right now. Actually, a website called niche.com, which I, it's largely, I think, more of a real estate oriented website to kind of help families sort of target communities that they'd like to live in, and where they think would be a good place to go to school. Oyster River was ranked third in the state of New Hampshire out of 76 high schools that were ranked there. There's a lot of flaws in their evaluation system, but the thing I really liked about it is they used responses from current and former students and families in terms of how they felt about the school as part of the ranking. And if you get a chance to go there on the website, they list a lot of the comments that various respondents gave. And a lot of the respondents, particularly about teachers, talked about how much they liked the relationships they had with their teachers, how close the relationships were, how much they felt supported by their teachers. And to me, that's the ranking that we clearly want to be on top of. So, I'll brag about that one. So, thanks.
Thanks.
Oh, actually, one more brag. Tomorrow night is the winter holiday concert. And if you want to see the new and much larger Oyster River Band performing, it's tomorrow night, 7 o'clock in the auditorium.
Okay.
Hi, Kathryn Plora, Director, Student Services. I just wanted to give a commendation to Susan Jackson. She's one of our special education teachers at the middle school. If Jay was here tonight, I'm sure he'd be sharing this with you. She started, for years she's done a math program around life skills for our students in terms of using money and going in the community and accessing sites and being able to kind of have that real-life experience. This year, she developed an activity in the middle school in terms of collecting change for Toys for Tots. And she expected maybe we'll collect a couple hundred dollars for this. Now, the students have been going around, the classes have started this little competition at this point, but they have raised over $1,500 just by collecting change from students at the middle school. There was an article in Foster's Today that discussed that a little bit. So, they are going to go to the bank on Friday and cash the change in. They're going to go and buy some Toys for Tots and turn them over to the Durham Fire Department. And they're also going to buy some gift cards for some of our community families who might need a little bit extra help around the holiday. So, I just wanted to mention that tonight.
Thank you. Others? So, Board, announcements, accommodations?
Just to add, you know, in response to what Dennis said, at the beginning of the year, it is really cool when the, actually, they're not doing it, they've moved to fifth grade, so you have to go to the middle school to see it. But when they start doing hot cross buns, the kids that are just getting their instruments, it is awesome. It is the most morose version you've ever heard in your life. And if you drop in periodically and hear the progression, it's just pretty cool. Anyway, my commendation really goes to the middle school drama club and to Jay. It turns out, last year, when they had a play, there were 90 kids that tried out for the play, and there were 36 parts. And in typical Oyster River fashions, there's mom, it's like, wow, you know, all those kids that didn't get to do anything, we should do something for them. So, she started a drama club and got Jay to help out, and they got a UNH Theater student to come in and help, and had practices, and they used the Durham library and put on a presentation of Alice in Wonderland that was really cool. So, it kind of gave a bunch of kids who wouldn't have had an opportunity, a chance to participate and maybe get a little bit better, so the next time they try out for the play, they can participate. And what really struck me about the whole thing is that years ago, I remember parents of elementary kids who were really concerned about their kids going to the middle school. They're like, oh, my gosh, you know, I'm worried how they're going to do there. But, you know, what I've seen is so many clubs that have blossomed at the middle school, and so many opportunities for kids to find their niche, that what, it really is exciting for a kid to see that. They get all these new opportunities to try. So, it's a real credit to Jay and what he's done there at the middle school.
That's right. I was still caught up in that. That was wonderful. I forgot I had... Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback about the music performances. I did get to see a couple of them last week, and I was most impressed with the number of students that participated in the various programs, from the chorus to the different bands. And just want to commend all the music teachers for a great job.
Great, thank you. Kenny?
I just wanted to, as we kind of come to the culmination of our budget process, and this is the second budget I've been involved with, and I think everyone on the Board would agree, and I think we reminded it in something we were sent in, Board writing, but I would like to really commend Sue Caswell. I think we are so lucky to have you, Sue, as our manager, business manager. And the budget processing, and Jim, you're so involved as a whole leadership team. But it's amazing how smooth, transparent it is, and I just think that you deserve a lot of credit, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Sarah?
I have three, and I'll make them quick. One, I was lucky enough to be able to participate in the mock interviews at the high school, I think it was last week, and met four fine young Oyster River High School students, and scared them out of their pants, I think, a little bit. But that is just such a fantastic experience, and I thank the guidance to Barbara, the economics teacher, Heather, and her last name is alluding me right now.
Keely.
Neely?
Keely.
Fabulous opportunity for those kids, and a great opportunity for a community member to get in and meet some of the kids coming out of our schools. So, that was wonderful. Also, I have been going to concerts and was very impressed with, again, having never had string program at the school, seeing particularly the middle school fifth and sixth grade concert, seeing that concert was pretty incredible. And I was also overwhelmed by the number of kids, but also the quality of playing. I've been going to music concerts for a long time, and it was quite impressive. And last one, I want to piggyback on Dennis's, you know, the toil of everyday stuff. I am doing some time doing compost duty in the middle school. And, you know, you really get to see the heartbeat of a school in a cafeteria, and you watch all the different grades go through, and just the way that the staff, from the custodial staff up to the assistant principal, to the cafeteria staff, engage those kids. Today, Mrs. Van Ooyen was in with, I think, sixth grade string players, and they were playing Christmas carols in one of the lunch shifts. You know, Mr. Sullivan has rock, paper, scissors tournament, which is a national tournament, I will tell you. He has that going on. And again, you know, just watching them build those connections, the connections with their peers and the connections with the adults in the school was really fabulous.
Great. And I have another comment about the middle school. When I went into Susie Renner's class, because I was starting to get an idea for a book project, and I wanted to talk to her kids, and not sure how they would respond to me. And I left that class thinking, if I had that level of discussion in a college class, I would be thrilled. So, I was kind of euphoric, you know. And then I'm thinking, these middle school kids, God. And then, so I go swimming like just a couple hours later, and damn, those middle school kids had these submersible robots, and they were going. And I thought, you know, anybody that thinks that we were smarter back then in middle school than they are now, I think just... And just one other story about middle school. You know, like, some of you know that I ride my bike to the Board meetings. And so, that's okay, but when you ride your bike back, you have to go up the notorious Co-Drive Hill. And so, I'm riding on my bike up the Co-Drive Hill, and there's this whole cluster of middle school kids at the driveway entrance, you know. You know, the 66-year-old guy riding his bike up, I'm wondering, well, how they're going to react to that, just hoping that they kind of ignore me and let me ride by. And so, I ride by them, and they cheer, and they give me a fist hump. And so, I give them a fist hump back, you know. And I'm thinking, good kids, you know, good kids. You know, they could have made a kind of comment, but they were good kids. So, good vibes out of the middle school. Other Board comments? Do you have an assistant superintendent? Nope, okay. Superintendent's report?
Not tonight.
Okay. Business administrator? Okay. Moving right along, student senate report?
Yeah, today, a few Senate members, they attended a staff meeting to present the results from the surveys that we conducted about the block day schedule. So, they just interpreted the numbers and talked about the feedback that they received from the students and teachers. And the staff took a vote, and the schedule will be changing back to Thursday and Friday. So, I think a lot of students are excited about that, and most of the teachers as well. And, yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about what's next on the table. So, that was pretty much our primary focus for a long time. So, it's exciting to, yeah, get that out of the way.
Could you say why the change is so much more appealing to you folks?
Yeah. Well, I guess, having two long classes, or two days of longer classes in the middle of the week, people don't really like going back on Friday. And, I don't know, they're used to going right into the weekend and having more time to work on their, like, bigger assignments that they usually get on the block days. So, but some people feel that it's better to come back in on Friday and just kind of regroup and talk to your teachers one more time before the weekend. But, yeah, the feedback that we got was mostly for changing it back to Thursday and Friday, and people did have some good reasons behind that.
Good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Discussion items, superintendent's evaluation will come. Unless there's something to be said now, that'll become later in a non-public session at the meeting today. So, we have the Warren articles to be approved, if we choose to do so. So, Sue?
Sure. So, I have given you some information about the articles, because I had a few updates to bring you, to bring back to you. I guess maybe we should just start with, when we do these, we kind of come up with our plan for the Warren articles, then we send them off to our attorneys, they make recommendations. Then, the next step is I send them off to Department of Revenue, and their recommendations, some are optional and some are required. So, the results of these changes, some of them are required. So, I've also given you, if you're interested in the copy from the Department of Revenue, where they've made their recommendations. So, as we go through them, there's only really one that we need to talk about. Article one, choose a moderator, we're all set with that. Questions, thoughts? Article two, to choose three school board members. Move on. So, article three, and this is the one that we've been trying to come up with the best way to present this one here. If you turn to the second page of the Department of Revenue's comments, you'll see that they commented on. The question that we've been going back and forth with is to what that real number is that we need to put in there for the fields, track and field. And because we are, the total project is going to be 2 million, we wanted to put it to 1.7, but we really have to, by state statute, make it 2 million. And I also followed up with a copy of, and I know it's not a great copy, but this is right out of the municipal budget law book on page 105, and I've highlighted her reasoning behind that. It has to be the gross budget. You have to be transparent, and you have to put the total amount in there. I know we talked about the $500,000 as a donation, and this one, we have a little leeway with. Because the project will go forward and be completed with the 2 million, we're okay with not putting in that extra fundraising money. Because, and I think, Tom, you and Dr. Morse talked to our attorney about that being eligible for, like, a donation, and we're covered, because years ago, we had a Warren article that allowed us to accept donations, and that will be considered a donation, and that's how we'll handle that extra half a million. Make sense?
I raised the issue about, because I thought, having the $500,000 in the Warren article clouded, made it more complicated, because whether, what happens if you don't get that $500,000? What happens if you get $300,000, are you still required to spend the 25, you know, that, so that to keep, and the project, from the standpoint of what we're asking, the voters can go forward with the 2 million. So, that to keep that as a separate, keep the fundraising out of the Warren article, made it cleaner, simpler, and actually more attractive, I think, to the voters. So, that was kind of something I was pushing. And I think this is much, much better. I have the question, Sue. I have the question, Sue, you know, the question I asked you before, we give a very specific amount of $36,833, and they're okay with that, right?
They are. I asked that question.
Even though, even though you aren't sure exactly what the terms are going to be. But that's a, a good faith estimate of what it will be, and so that's satisfactory. Is that right?
Because she mentioned to me that, you know, you know you get your estimates, your estimates are estimates, they may be higher, they may be lower. Can't be a whole lot of money that you're going to need if they're a little bit higher, and if you can find that elsewhere, that's fine. Chances are, they'll probably be a little lower, so.
Yeah.
We're fine with that number.
Yeah. And we cut out, I think, in the, we think we cut out an additional, and in addition to raise and appropriate, it had the additional sum of $36,000, and I thought that was kind of confusing.
And that was fine.
Because essentially, you're just raising, you're just, you know, indicating what you're going to spend for the first year for principal and interest, right?
And they're okay with that, too.
Okay.
So that was fine. Any other questions on that article?
Just a couple of comments on the article and on the explanation. On the article, would it be okay for us in the, I guess it's the next to last sentence of the, next to last line in the article, but the last sentence, where it goes, "Interest payment on the bonds or notes." Just put a semicolon there, and then scratch off the word "and."
Or, scratch off "and"?
Yeah. Just to kind of really separate.
For yours' principal interest?
No, no, so...
Notes, semicolon. $300,000 to come from?
Right.
No "and."
Right. And, but, and so, and after notes, put a semicolon. I don't, it just, I don't know if that works for people.
I, I think we need to keep the "and," because otherwise, it sounds like the $300,000 is, I think it, I, to me, it is clear that it's two separate things. I don't mind the semicolon, but I think we need to keep the "and."
Okay, I'm good with that. And then, should we talk about the explanation, too, at this point?
Yep, definitely.
So we can do it, we're not tied to the, to the, we can, we have freedom in our...
Just a small suggestion, halfway through the body, the sentence, "An artificial turf field will improve drainage," I would add an "and" there, "and allow for much greater utilization of the field." And then instead of "and," put, "While the reconfiguration of our baseball and softball fields will provide for multi-use play."
So, "An artificial turf field will improve drainage and allow for much utilization, greater utilization of the field." Then what was the rest of it?
Then, scratch "and," and instead put "while."
While.
"The reconfiguration of our baseball and softball fields will provide for multi-use play." Or facilitate multi-use play. How is that English, Professor?
Do you need "while," or just start a new sentence there? Just a period, and just start a new sentence, the reconstruction?
I think, I think I'd go period.
Period.
Yeah, period.
Yep.
And then start the sentence with the reconfiguration.
Are there other? I wonder if we could have, I'm trying to think in terms of process, whether we should have a motion to approve these as we go along. So I wonder if we could have a motion, because I think one and two are...
One, and also the, the, we kind of already have approved five, which is the, isn't that the agreement with the Paris?
Four and five.
Four and five.
Four and five, I don't think we can, I think we can...
And we've already kind of reached, I think we already, didn't we already vote to, like...
For both contracts.
So I wonder if we could have a motion to approve one, two...
Four and five.
Three, well...
No, three's the one we probably, or do we need it separate?
I mean, unless, okay.
No, I guess not. With the, with the changes.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we have a, one and two, I think, or, you know, maybe have a motion for one and two and three with the change, that simple change to the description? Is that, would that be, does anybody have any further concerns beyond that? Maria?
Just asking about the process, because I would vote to place this on the warrant article on the ballot, but I'm not sure I want to vote to recommend it.
So you could make that, the vote, just to place this for the public hearing, if you want, so that if you...
Well, I think you could vote against.
You could vote against it, too.
That's true.
If you think, if you think this shouldn't go...
And we could separate it, if, I guess, if Maria wants that designation.
I think it should be on the ballot.
Why don't you do, why don't we do one, two, four and five?
Yes, yes.
Because those are non-controversial.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Could I have a block motion to approve articles one, two, four, and five? Kenny?
I move that we put forward articles one, article two, article four, and article five as written.
Okay. Do we have a second? Al? Moved and seconded, are there discussions about those? Okay, could you have a vote? All those in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay. Could I have a motion, then, to approve article three with the, one revision to the explanation with, with "field," period, then capital T for the configuration?
An "and" after drainage. Drainage and allow. Yeah, and if, "An artificial turf field will improve drainage and allow for much greater..."
Those two changes?
And what about "provide"? Did you say that? Will allow, or will provide?
I just changed "allow," just so we didn't have "allow" in two sentences in a row.
Oh.
To provide, is that okay?
To provide.
That's fine.
Okay, could just maybe read that one second. "Artificial service will approve drainage and provide for much greater utilization of the field," period, the, capital V for configuration? That's the, that's a change, am I, did I have that correct, Kenny?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Okay. Okay. "An artificial turf field will improve drainage and provide for much..."
So I would, and allow for, for much greater...
Sorry, the second "allow."
The second "allow," okay.
And the second "allow" becomes "provide."
An "allow for much greater utilization of the field," period, the...
Oh, I see, okay.
Capital V, configuration, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Does everybody have that? Okay. Could we have a motion to approve article three with those changes to the explanation? Kenny?
I move to submit article three for approval as written, and in deference to Maria, a separate vote on whether we want to put in, the school board recommends this appropriation or not. So we'll just vote on article three without that one line, "The school board recommends this appropriation." And then after that, I'd like to make a motion that the school board approves...
So how do you want this, that motion to read? I'm sorry, Kenny.
So it would be, it would be to approve article three as written, except for the clause that says the school board recommends this appropriation.
And then you're going to make a separate motion?
To say that I'd like to attach that to article three.
Okay, so then, you can have a vote to have it appear on the ballot, and then another vote whether we support approval of it.
Exactly.
Okay? Okay? Is that clear for? Okay. So could you say your motion again, Kenny?
So I, I move that we accept article three as written with the changes we've made, but taking out the sentence, "The school board recommends this appropriation."
You just have it without the "school board recommended" clause?
Yeah.
Is that okay? Do that instead? Okay, thank you.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. Is it clear now, or, this is essentially a vote to put this warrant article on the ballot?
On the ballot.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And Todd, this is sort of to you. How do you feel about taking that $500,000 out of the warrant article? Because the warrant article we initially got in our backup talks about the project as being a, you know, $2.5 million project with that piece of it being fundraised. How do you feel about taking it and now describing it as a, I mean, and I understand why they're, why it's been done. I understand that it's making it clean, but I, how do you feel about it?
Well, I think, first of all, it doesn't change the task that Cory and I and our other fundraisers are going to undertake, so it essentially doesn't change anything for us.
Okay.
I do think it does answer the question that, you know, that the $2 million gets the project virtually completed with, like, I've, I've used the term bells and whistles, although they're a little more than bells and whistles, but it gets us a turf field, it gets us the basic project completed, and it, and we've kind of wrestled with how to communicate that to people. So I'm comfortable with not having it in, because again, like I said, we're going to be doing the same fundraising effort regardless. Some might argue it gives us license to raise more than a half a million.
And with the forms that you've been doing, you feel that it's clear to the community, the people that you've already spoken with, that the $2 million gets the basic part, we're not getting bleachers, we're not getting, I, I guess what I don't want to have happen is have people, you know, we raised the $2 million, you guys don't quite get that $500,000, and so we don't get the bleachers and the lights, and then we have people come back and say, well, why do we have no bleachers and no lights?
All of the communicating we're doing has that. If you go to our website, that's, that's what we're talking about, and we're breaking it down by the various components and what each part gets. We're even spelling out, you know, what the additional half million would be used for. But again, I'm, I'm, I think it does simplify the question in the voter's mind when they go in to say, do they support this project or not? And then the project goes forward with a yes vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're ready to have a vote on the motion, which is to essentially put this on the, on the ballot, okay? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Kenny?
And I would like to make a motion that we add to article three, the clause, "The school board recommends this appropriation."
Okay. Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Okay. So, and then if there's a majority vote, then we recommend...
Just to speak to that, and I, I look at it as, anytime we vote, it doesn't necessarily mean that the vote is seven in favor or something, but we, it's understood that if you have a majority vote, then that's, you know what I mean? You know, that's, that, I mean, and that's true for anytime we vote, like, if any of us are ever in the minority, it's like, well, that passed with school board, you know, and it can be reflected in the minutes, in terms of who didn't vote in favor or whatever. But to me, you know, it's still, it's still, if the majority votes, then it still would be a recommendation.
Correct, correct.
I'd just like to bring up, in the past, that when the board does approve these things, that at the deliberative sessions, it's not appropriate for board members then to stand up and say, and, but I didn't really agree with this one. So I just want to just put that out there.
That's true.
Certain memories of...
Yeah, certain memories.
That is part of Robert's rules.
Great. So could we have a vote on whether to put in the language, "The school board recommends this appropriation"? So all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, all those opposed?
Six.
Six, I'm sorry, six in favor, the student rep in favor. All those opposed? One opposed, Maria opposed. Okay, the motion passes. So warrant article three will appear with the changes to the, to the explanation. So, moving ahead.
To move on to...
Six?
Six. And pointing to Department of Revenue, there were no questions about that. Do you have questions?
Sue, do you want to just take, Maria had given us a question related to why this article didn't look similar to the one that we did in 2013, related to revenue being dedicated to reserve account? Can you just kind of address that in a public forum, so that it's on the record?
So this article here establishes a trust fund that you, the school board, are agents of, so you have the ability to decide when it's appropriate to expend it, governed by the RSA that's stated in here, 198:20-C. The article that Maria was referring to was the one that we did in 2012 that was new, new legislation that allowed us to retain fund balance for unanticipated tax increases and emergencies. And I believe in that case, emergencies needed to be approved by the Commissioner of Education. And that article allowed you to retain up to, I think it was 2% of your total budget. I just didn't have the complete recollection of it, but that was different than this expendable trust fund. The similarity here is that you are using fund balance. So that's where it gets a little confusing, because it is unanticipated fund balance that you're asking to retain in both cases. And then the other question you had was the word "raise," how confusing that is, because we've already raised that money. And the take I, I got on that is that this is money from the prior year's budget that you're asking to raise again, because technically, you would give that back in the form of a turn back for excess fund, excess balance. It's money that you wouldn't spend, you would send it back. You don't really send it back, but it goes into your fund balance and is part of your revenues for the next year, so you need to raise it again. It's not the budget you're voting on, it's the prior year's budget.
It's this year's...
It's this year's budget that we're in.
Which we have raised.
You're right.
We're t, if I was the voter and said, oh, they want $200,000 more.
Because technically, it is $200,000 more, because you would have turned it back. So you are asking for more, but it's money that you already raised. You're, you're right, you're right, but that's just...
And we spend out of that fund balance for things.
But you finished that before the end of June. This allows you to carry it beyond the month of June. That's what this authority gives you.
The new fiscal year, because all these warrants are about July 1st.
Right.
And so once you hit July 1st, you have to have the authority of the voters to expend money from the previous year, the previous year is the year we're in.
That's the authority to raise this language.
With the fund that we established, you know, two years ago, we're putting money in there, and that also carries forward, it stays in there until we use it for an emergency or whatever. This, we put before the end of the year, and...
But every time you wanted to put money in here, you'd have to ask for it, for this one. Your other article is kind of a blanket article that allows you to retain up to a certain amount of fund balance. So that's what's a little different. This one, you couldn't continue to put it in unless it showed up and you got the authority every year from the voters to say, yes, we want to put more money into that expendable trust fund. The other...
Then I would put in the explanation that the lawyers are lying to us. What we really do, isn't this?
Speaking of lawyers.
Department of Revenue.
Well, it's the legislature. It's part of how they presented that and how it was voted.
Well, that's not hard to say.
I had a question about the explanation, just to be the devil's advocate. The funds to support this would come from the year-end surplus and not impact the tax rate. Suppose somebody said, yes, but if you turn it back to the voters...
True.
It would impact the tax rate. So, I mean, is that really...
Yeah, what's a better way to say that?
I think, I would say...
You mentioned that you wanted that in there, right? Somebody said, let's put that in there, but how, what's a better way to...
I would just, I would just...
I would just scratch it.
Scratch it.
I would just say, maybe, can you clarify, would it help to say the funds to support this would come from the current year-end surplus, or, or something?
Yep.
It would not impact future taxes?
Are you going to mention it, because my understanding was, is the LGC settlement, right, that we, I mean, obviously money is...
Some of it, yes, correct. That's, that was the, yeah.
But if you indicate current year-end, at least people know that that's where it's, that's where the money is coming from.
I think, I think that sentence, because I, I think it's just, you know, kind of not true, really.
Well, we've put a period at the end of, taking Denise's thought, and you put a period at the end of year-end surplus...
And not put that in.
And not even address that issue, it's accurate.
And just scratch it. Just scratch it.
The other alternative, just so people could think, is to keep, cross off that end part and put, and does not involve raising additional revenue.
Additional taxes, yeah. Could put that, too.
I think it's cleaner to just put a period after surplus and not even address the tax issue.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Because no matter how you cut the tax issue, somebody's going to come from a different angle and say, "Yeah, bye." So if you just put a period there, you end the discussion.
Do we want to, and you were saying, Tom, that the monies are all fungible, but do we want to somehow designate that the opportunity arose because of the settlement? Is that...
I don't think that's germane to the issue, Kenny, because, you know, it could be that the funds would be there regardless of whether we had a settlement or not.
Okay. Which brings up the point of, if we do this any year, this, if this comes up again, it has to be another warrant article.
Yes.
But that, that isn't in any of the explanation. This looks like a one-time trust fund.
It could be, it could be.
It could be the only time you do it. Every time you do it, it's a one-time event, and this particular one. The previous one gave, it renews itself until you get to the ceiling. This one has to be renewed by the voters annually, so it's every time, it's a one-year. So you might skip a year, do another year.
Right, but it also doesn't say that this is a one-time thing. It doesn't say that next year, we're going to just put 200 aside into this, which is kind of the way that the last warrant article looks like.
Well, then, what would happen if you went to it the next year, you wouldn't say establish, because you've already established it. You would be putting money into the already established fund in the next year. So this establishes it and funds it. If you put more money into it, then you fund it. So you establish it only the one year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
So the article would be different the next time out when you continue to fund it.
But, but these voters don't see that, don't know that that's not, this is just not another way to slip $200,000 every year into this fund that they don't even see.
So you're, and if I'm reading you right, you're saying it might be a good idea to mention that this is a one-time, that every year, this would have to be come before the voters, because it's not feeling like we're going to take 200 every year.
Right, right, especially since the previous warrant article looked, was set out that way.
That's true.
So you'd say, like, additional funds would require voter approval or something like that?
An annual contribution would require...
Additional voter approval.
Wait, just say this applies to, this applies to this year only, or something?
I, to me, I would get even more confused as a voter, I think, because I would feel like, oh, so now they're looking to do this every year. Like, to me, this, I don't know, when I've seen these in the past, like, I've always understood for myself that if I'm voting for something, it's, it's just for this, you know, it is for this year.
Just for this year.
I think if you start saying something about, you know, future, then people will say, "Well, wait a minute, am I voting to do this every year?" That's when you would introduce that confusion. And my, that's just the way I see it, anyway.
Because you've done this before with the special ed fund, you have a maintenance fund.
Right.
People have seen this before. It's a similar concept, just a different purpose.
I wonder whether in the explanation, it really doesn't, I mean, my understanding, and I could have it wrong, is that there's a certain volatility. There's a volatility, obviously, in benefits, you know? And the way our health benefit works is it's highly dependent upon the pool of people getting services, you know, in our district. Is that right?
Sometimes. I mean, some, that's part of it. Part of it is just...
But I mean, if you, so if you had, I mean, you know, I'm just saying that that creates volatility as well, because, because it's not this huge giant pool. It's a pool where you could have major illnesses that could drive up, so that you're, that there's a, and I'm not sure whether this is something just through the presentation, or that, and this, something like, you know, the board feels the need to, the need to establish this fund because of the historic volatility of benefit costs and, and the uncertainty about, you know, certainly federal legislation and how it might affect costs. Something, there's a, you know, it's kind of like the reason, like, unexplained increases in benefit costs. That's a pretty bland way of giving a rationalization, it seems to me, right? I mean, it's, the sense is, this is volatile, this is totally unknown territory, what's going to happen ahead, and for not, that, this gives us some kind of insurance that if that, if there is a spike, we don't have to put everything on hold to take care of the spike. Not that we have to say all that, but...
Well, I'm just saying, then you could take out, like, first of all, you probably don't need unexplained, because you, because we already know, kind of, it's going to be a benefit, we've said this is benefit, so. So you could say, I mean, I can't believe I'm wordsmithing this, but just say, like, that, I've lost the thing, that, that in the event of a, you know, major increase in benefit costs, you know, something like that, that's kind of the thing.
Unexpected.
Unexpected, or unexpected instead of unexplained.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I have to say, when I read the explanation, I, I said, gosh, I would look at and go, "Why do they need that fund?"
Mm-hmm, sure.
But if you've been following the budget and you've been hearing that historically in the past few years, we have been getting hit, you know, more is getting handed down to us from the state, then I think that becomes clear as to why you might want to vote for such a thing.
But I agree. I like, in the event of major or unexpected increases.
Okay.
And I agree wholeheartedly with the trend of this conversation. Should one of us sort of work with you and come back with that explanation language? Would that be better than...
Well, we can approve the warrant and then work on the explanation and have it back to you for January.
I think that would be good.
Yep.
Because I think, I think there needs to be something, this isn't strong enough to justify right now this warrant.
And two things that I had, one on the explanation, using Maria's philosophy in policy committee of striking, do we even need that second sentence at all? So I don't, I don't know if we do, but I don't, if, if it's just money to do...
The school board would be agents of the fund, is that one?
No.
No, just to say the funds to support this would come from year-end surplus, because they come from really anywhere. And it's, so I was thinking that. But getting to the, I don't know if we have any wiggle room with the wording of the warrant at all?
The warrant itself has been reviewed by the Department of Revenue at this point, and so we're pretty much locked into that, Ken.
The only thing I thought of adding, and it explains a little, would be after the purpose of offsetting, something in there is missing, I think, and I thought the cost of is missing. The cost of unexpected increases.
Are we inside the warrant or down at the explanation?
In the warrant, and that, towards the end of the second line, after offsetting...
No, it makes sense, offsetting unexpected increases.
I think it's, I think it's clear.
Okay.
The only if, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, Maria's...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a question on the warrant article. Why do we have two names for this? This will be known as the Benefit Stabilization Fund, and later on, we're adding money to Benefit Expendable Trust Fund.
Good catch.
Should be the same.
Should be the same.
I would think so.
Good eye.
Good eye, good catch.
And the only thing, if we wait, and we, we wait for the explanation, is that going to mess up, though, your timetable?
No.
No.
No, that's okay, as long as the warrant itself is, okay.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
We're getting pretty strong signal that the explanation needs to be beefed up, so we'll get that going.
So, so we wouldn't, just to keep the name the same, we wouldn't have to go back to revenue?
No.
No, no, that's, no.
Okay. So I'm wondering if we're ready to have a vote, vote on, on the warrant, and then with the explanation to come in the next meeting?
With Maria's change.
With Maria's.
The warrant, you know, the consistency of name, so.
It's instead of benefit, expendable.
So the Benefit Stabilization Fund, added to the benefit, you know, the, the fourth line, and added to the benefit stabilization.
Expendable trust fund.
Expendable trust fund, yeah.
Oh, so expendable.
Delete the expendable in there.
It's not deleted, sorry.
So it's just stabilization.
Benefit stabilization, expendable.
Al, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant Article VI with Maria's change.
Yeah, is that clear? Moved by Al, seconded by Denise. Are we ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student, seven in favor, the student rep in favor. And we'll have the explanation come to us in the next meeting.
Yep.
Fair enough. Okay, Article VII?
Article VII. So, and I gave you some backup information for that, so just to refresh your memory of where we are with the budget. The sheets that I gave you in your packet, just based on our decisions, where we had added in the yellow sheets.
I got a question on the, according to the yellow sheets. On this setup of our numbers that shows 2.8% percent increase, we have retirement reductions at 6, wasn't it 8?
It was, but we haven't identified two of them as part of our budget development, because we didn't have the revenue to offset those costs.
Ah, I was, I couldn't think back, that actually drives it down further, right?
It would, but we don't have the money within the budget to pay off those extra two.
Okay.
So what we did was, we went back and revised the budget. So your first proposed budget is on the, on the left, 39, 354, 720, and your difference, that was what you had the last time. We added everything back in to the appropriate areas in the budget and came up with the 39, 454, 621.
You, you lost, I guess that's, I'm a little lost with where, where that difference came from. I'm not quite following.
Okay, so if you go down, drop down where it says includes?
On which paper are you looking at?
Oh, you have this new sheet that I gave you, the new one that I just gave you in your packet.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'm looking at a different sheet, so that's why.
That's why.
Oh, okay, got it, all right.
So that one has revised where we were. I kept to where we were, just so you'd have that information, what we originally proposed, and then we reworked the numbers with all of those retirements in, in the proper categories. Oh, okay. And added in the yellow sheets where they belong. So that changes your total to the 39, 454, 621. Okay. You follow me so far? Yeah. And then we just left that little note on the side, just so you knew what those were, the yellow sheets and all of that information, but that's all incorporated in that top part. Okay. So then your total general fund is the 39, 454, 621. Okay. Okay, so that is the number that is reflected in the warrant that says 39, 454, 621, your regular operating budget. Fund 21 is food service, and I know we didn't talk about that a lot, but that's the number that was presented in your budget from Doris. Okay? Fund 22 is federal funds, and that's based on the current amount that we're receiving in federal funds. It's kind of an estimate, so we're using the 600,000. And then Fund 23, that's the fund that we use, that kind of grabs all of the donations or any other funds outside of the others, where, where we are able to receive funds for grants that are unexpected. All goes in there. Enrichment goes in there.
Is there, and any...
So...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So then, if you go back up to the total, that 47, 59, 297 is the total of all of those funds. Way at the beginning, I skipped over that purposely, for the purpose totaling 47, 59, 297. That's the total of all of those funds. They're just broken down. Still with me?
Ten, 21, 22, 23.
Yep, they're all added up to the 47, 59.
I have a question, and maybe it doesn't, it doesn't need to appear on the warrant, but one of the things we talked about was the, the amount we're really asking taxpayers, the percentage increase in the, the net increase.
Right.
Which we're counting in revenues.
So, again, the way you have to present it...
I understand, I understand that, but I mean, in terms of, I think, in terms of the presentation of it to, you know, because we are, I think you had, I think the figure is something like 200,000 in additional revenue that you're anticipating.
Right.
Which, if you calculate that into this, if you took that from this 280, it brings us down to 2.8, it brings it down closer to probably 2.6 or 2.5, right, in terms of the, is that, am I not reading correctly?
Well, I mean, revenue is a whole other side that we haven't really talked about, but you're right, when we do the presentation, we'll present that and show that, how that impacts, but you really can't.
I understand, yeah.
But you're right.
I just, I just think, because, I mean, that was a big issue, you know, in terms of our goal, you know, because we had the goal in terms of the growth, but then we weren't counting in. I think Maria made the point, and Dean made the point, several, I think everybody made the point, to me, at some point, that we weren't, in terms of the impact on the taxpayers, the revenue count, you know, the additional revenue counts.
It does, it does.
There's a revenue sheet in, in their packet, too, is there not?
No, no, we haven't done that.
You didn't put the revenue sheet in?
Okay.
I think I did that.
But I, I think in terms of a present, in the presentation.
Presentation, right.
We need, because that's real money, and that's real money that would offset this 2.8. Is that, I'm correct about that, right?
You're correct, but it's different and impacts different, and different...
Each town.
Each town is impacted differently. So that's why, when you make a general statement, it's different. And that's the next piece of paper I gave you, too, so. It's how it impacts each. So just going back to this, though, you can, I broke down what Article III, Article IV, and Article V, how much of a percentage that is.
Right.
Should they all pass, that's how much they add to that 2.8. Yep. Does that make sense to everyone? Yep. Do you all understand that? Okay.
So wait, this, this right most column, those are percentages?
Those are percentages, so...
What's the one in the middle? You have 36,000, you have 2.89, is that how, and then?
Oh, it, I just, I think I added them collectively. So I took 2.8 plus .018, plus .18, so that at the end of the day, you're at 3.15.
I got it.
Makes sense?
Yeah, I got it.
But then if you wanted to just shop around, you could do that.
I, I have one, like, a procedural thing. I mean, we never, so, I mean, before we can approve the warrant, all the yellow sheet additions, we never technically ever said, "Yes, we want," I mean, "We want all these," or "We want only these," or, so I think that we should probably have...
It's probably our last chance to ask that question, so if people want to get justifications, you know, of why, why this, you know, could we do without that, which one we, you know, any, any priority, any question like that, I think this is the time to raise those.
Do you want me to do a run-through?
They're on your sheet. Right, they're all there.
And do you want me to run through the justification, or do you want to wait for a question, Tom?
I think if you could just briefly justify each one. I mean, I don't want to drag this thing out, but I think that...
May I have your sheet?
Yeah.
So largely, the positions that were asked for, were largely asked for from the high school. There are some other departments coming in, but largely, the issues that are facing the high school are faced by increasing enrollment, no surprise, as we're increasing the number of tuition students. And all of the positions that the high school principal, Todd Allen, has asked for really are part-time positions that complete part-time positions is already has. So he's just kind of marrying his current part-time positions with a need to create them into full-time positions. So, for example, he has, he's requested a .6, or essentially a little bit more than halftime math teacher. He already has a .4, so this creates a 1.0 position. The cost is $40,340. He needs that in order to accommodate his increased enrollment in mathematics. He's asked for a .4 science position, a little bit less than halftime, at $43,297. You may wonder, well, why would a .6 position cost less than a .4 position? Because we are literally basing this on the people who currently occupy the part-time positions, assuming that they will go to full-time if you approve the budget. Again, enrollment issue. World language, as Todd said when he was doing his presentation, we were a little surprised. After years and years of decline, all of a sudden, we have this pop, and it looks like it'll be a consistent pop because the Barrington students coming in do not have foreign language, as our students do, and so now our foreign language program is robust, and he asked for a .4 position there, $34,255.
Okay, that's a question.
Al, start.
Did we eliminate, did we eliminate, like, last year, was there, I mean, I thought we eliminated one, and this is just kind of restoring that to...
Initially, we did have a .4 reduction, but the Barrington enrollments that came in after the budget was discussed was a sudden surge, so we weren't, we didn't end up eliminating the .4.
Okay, okay.
This is convert, basically adding another .4, because now we've got an additional 30 to 40 world language students coming in for next year.
I got it, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Todd. So that completes the request from the high school, and then what we were wonderfully surprised by this fall, as we started a new strings program, and you've all complimented the program this, this evening, is that the number of youngsters we anticipated, doing very conscientious headcounts, was about 40 students taking strings this fall. We ended up with 79, so nearly double what we expected. And the strings teacher is one body, and so we felt the need to bring in a tutor to help her do lessons, so that was a cost of $20,000. And then in our early childhood program, we, okay, now I'm drawing a blank, Catherine, early childhood, 16,000.
No, that's Todd.
That's Todd also.
Oh, that's, that's Todd also, thanks. That's a high school physician as well. That's the teacher he's bringing in through contracted service to assist in teaching the early childhood program, where once we had a full-time FCS teacher costing us, you know, in the avenue of $80,000. This is a contracted service to provide this very specific program at the high school. And then finally, in terms of our technology program, we're woefully understaffed. Josh and his staff are really working incredibly hard and, and barely keeping their noses above water, and we actually are recommending the addition of an additional instructional technology support technician at the tune of $55,000. So that would be the review, and sorry for that brain cramp I had on early childhood.
All right. So are there other questions about the positions? So are there other questions about the positions? So are we ready to vote on the warrant?
Well, are we gonna have more discussion about other things on the war? I mean, do you want to do like, a motion, a second, and then discussion?
I think any question, I think if we have a motion to approve the warrant, we can discuss the warrant.
Can I do like a motion to approve the addition of the yellow sheets into the budget? And then you can still discuss the budget.
Right, I just have other comments about the budget, I guess, so.
Do you have, do you have comments? I mean, I, my question is, do you, can we approve the addition, the yellow sheet additions as a slate, or do you want to separate them individually, or, I mean, how do people want to, I mean, I'll make a motion to just approve.
All right, I'll just say now, because I, it's a little confused. So, I guess I'm fine with approving all of these, because I understand the need for them, and, and they definitely, you know, it's been explained, and, and they certainly make sense to me. I think we have to do a better job of communicating the need to the public, particularly in light of the Foster's article that was mentioned during public comments, that I feel is very, very misleading in terms of, you know, talking about our enrollment decline and, and making it sound, you know, like we're gonna have to lay off people, and I can see the public saying, well, if you're doing that, how can you justify adding these positions? So, like, I understand it, and I think we just need to do a much better job of communicating to the public what is actually going on with our enrollment, because, you know, we're not, our enrollment is not a cliff. I, I feel like I've been saying that for quite a few years, you know, and, and so I just, I just want to make sure that we can do that. But to me, yes, the positions really do make sense.
We're gonna have two, well, I mean, we definitely need to do a better job. I, I mean, we're gonna have two opportunities, one at the public hearing where Jim does his presentation of the budget, he can mention all of that. And the second one is whoever so decides to stand up at the deliberative session and explain this can also get a second bite at that to where they really do a better explanation. So I, we're gonna get two chances.
And also the tours around the town.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's answerable.
I guess, I would, rather than to have a separate motion for the, if somebody would like to separate out and vote on the positions, that would be certainly something we could do. But if nobody wants to do that, I think to go ahead and vote on the warrant, as, you know, there's no reason not to go ahead and vote on the warrant. That's the way I would look at it, so.
I've thrown that, the idea I've had, and maybe not getting traction, but I thought I'd take one last chance, and maybe downsizing it, and maybe adding $5,000 to the budget. We have one school that volunteers to be kind of an experimental program, where we bring back in some of our recently retired teachers in sort of a mentoring kind of program, and do that as a trial for one year, and see if that really helps with career development improvement, if our staff's teaching abilities, whether that gets a favorable outcome. So, I would, if there's support for that, I would want to make a motion to add $5,000 to our operating budget, to include that kind of as a yellow sheet in line with the teachers.
Can I, I just want to comment, Tom.
Sure.
So, I mean, I appreciate the, the thought of, of doing it, but we do, I would rather.
Does he have a second?
No, I didn't want a second, I don't know.
I think, I think if there's a, I need a second to have a discussion of it, right?
Did he formally make a motion? I'm not sure.
Yes.
I was, I guess I was putting it out, if, if there's no interest in the board, then I don't even need to.
I mean, if you make a motion, I'll, I'll wait until the discussion, but I wasn't sure he'd made a motion.
Oh, that's all changes.
Is it best to make a motion?
Okay. Let's, let's go ahead, make the motion, if, if there's no second to it, then we don't discuss it, if there's a second, we can discuss it. I think in deference to you, you've, you've raised this, and it's an important thing, you know, let's, let's make the time.
So I would make a motion that we add $5,000 to our operating budget, our Fund 10, and use that money, we agree on one school, and set up a trial program whereby we bring back in some newly retired teachers who will be paid at a per diem kind of rate, and they would act as mentors to some of the developing staff in those schools, and that would be at the discretion of the principal of that particular school.
Okay, so the motion is to create, to add $5,000 to the budget for a mentoring program using retired teachers?
And, and for one year, just as an experimental program.
Okay. Motion, is there a second? Denise?
I'll second.
You second, okay. Could I ask your sense of the workability of a trial mentorship program?
Well, you know, Kenny and I have talked about it, conceptually, I think it's a great idea, but, you know, it's, for me, it's an issue of, it's, we have a professional development committee, and, you know, something like this, I would, I would think would be something that the, the teachers would posture as, as a vehicle, as opposed to the board. I'm not against the concept, I'm just not sure that it has the, has caught the imagination of our teaching staff.
I guess.
I, I've used a program like this very much in the past, so I'm used to it. I just don't know what it would be in terms of receptivity.
And I did reach out to many teachers and spoke, and spoke to some principals as well, and they were very excited about that opportunity. So, you know, that's not a formal study, but did get that feedback.
So would it be possible, I mean, as an alternative, to, you know, have this idea, because there, is there a committee, a staff development committee that could come, you know, that this, this idea could, rather than come from, I don't, rather than it come from us, the board, whether we could encourage a staff development committee to explore this idea, pluses and minuses, and then, and then build that into the budget for, I mean, I don't mean to just postpone it, but I'm thinking if, you know, in terms of process, to have it vetted by a staff development committee, because, I mean, there are tremendous talent in the, and then I think if then, then there's buy-in, if they're, if they're, if they're committed to it, then, then it's more likely to work, so whether that could be proposed.
Yeah, I know the professional evaluation committee that's meeting right now is having discussions, and one of the discussions they're having is based on the idea of peer-to-peer mentorships. So if that idea captures their imagination, and they incorporate it into their evaluation recommendations, then I could see this idea pollinating, but I think they, they're, they're not, they haven't articulated that formally, they, they have it down as a concept. So I, I think the idea has merit, but they're right at developmental stages of, of putting that down into their plan, and whether it, in the end, still is in the plan, I won't know until we get to probably March or April, but it is a discussion they're having.
Al? Okay, so now I come back to my, what I was gonna say, which is that, again, I, I like the idea, but I think when you're coming to the board and asking us to put money aside, you should have a fully, it should be fully formulated. There's just too many things out there. I don't know which school's gonna be done, how it's gonna work, so it's, if the teachers develop something, they come up with a mentoring program, they said this is how it's gonna work, and we need, and instead of just guessing five, that, we need this much money because we are estimating we need this much time. I mean, the devil is really in the details of the program for it to be successful, so rather than us, you know, putting the money first and then saying, develop the program, let's develop the program first, and then we can approve the money. I just think it's backwards, but again, I like the idea, I just don't think that we're there yet.
So, so, Tom, would there be, would there be money, that $5,000, I mean, should this, should teachers want to go through a program like that? Would there be that kind of money in the budget to, because there is money in the staff development budget?
No, I, I think that, no, I would say the answer to that directly, Ed would know, because we, we don't have a fully fledged concept fleshed out, so we don't know exactly what the, the peer mentoring model would be. I know that they've had conversations about peer-to-peer support, and whether that conversation would grow to be retired teachers coming in and working as part of that support network, I don't know yet, so. I, I'm excited by the conversations that are going on by the professional evaluation committee. I'd like to see them come forward with an actionable plan, so that you all could have a discussion about what that means from them, because I know that they're heading down a path that's like this, it may not be exactly like this, Ken, but it's, they're having that rich conversation, and I'd like to see them carry that conversation to fruition.
So, hearing all that, I would agree to withdraw my motion if you'll agree your second.
Okay, but we all, we'll keep, keep, this is a, is a possible, possible mentorship idea, that, that certainly there's talent, and with retirements, it's very talented teachers, you know, whether they can use, so, okay, but thank you for bringing that up. So, I'm wondering whether, unless people want to separate out the issue of the positions, whether we can vote on the warrant article, we're ready? So, and I'm not, I've lost track whether we've had a motion to approve the warrant, I don't think we've.
I don't know.
So I'm wondering if I could have a motion to approve Article 7 as written? Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Warren Article 7.
Both by Al, seconded by Denise? Okay. Is there further discussion on this? It's funny, things like $40 million. So, ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in the favor, the student rep affirmative, that motion passes. Okay, so the warrant articles with the, with the.
It will come back with the explanation.
So, so they're all, that's a big, big achievement.
Right.
Good. One small item that, I don't really think a vote is necessary on this unless you choose it, that I, the New Hampshire School Boards Association has an annual meeting where they vote on motions, and I, in the back of the material, you have all the, the motions, and I think rather than, than have us give advice, and I can't attend because I'll be out of town, Al's agreed to, to be the delegate to that.
I thought I was.
What?
I thought I was the appointed person, but that's.
Do you want to do it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Maria. Maria, you're appointed, really. Oh, boy.
I am more than willing to.
Maria, if you'd like to do it, that's, I'm sorry.
No, no, but I thought I had to, so, thank you, Al.
Well, I, that's, let me try. See, I, I find that as I get older, I rely on memory, and it really doesn't work.
Right.
But, so if.
I found, found this when I came in, a very shiny penny, but they had up, so it must have been for this.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Apparently I missed a lucky penny.
Yeah. As I said, you know, by, I, I think that rather than have us give him advice on how to vote on each of the motions, you know, to allow him to make his decision, because we won't hear the discussion, but I wanted everybody to, that's agreeable to people, because I think to have it, but I wanted people just to, to see what things were coming up, and obviously, some things like the, the right to know, the revision of the right to know, I mean, we were involved in a situation where, where it was unclear whether we had the right to, with the, you know, during the tuition negotiations, we go into these meetings, and I think that that clarity would certainly benefit us. So I, basically, it's mainly for information, and not necessarily for us, if that's agreeable, to go in and give him advice on how to vote on each of those, but maybe when you come back, to give us a good report on. Okay? So, that's pretty much, let's see, I think, move then on to school board updates. Denise?
The long-range planning committee did meet, and the focus was primarily on discussing how to incorporate the Barrington numbers more accurately.
Yeah.
And so we talked about getting the, for example, the agreement, their, the Barrington's agreement with Dover to find out, because we weren't sure how many students they are committing to Dover, and basically to give us a better idea if we're likely to hit the 200 student ceiling that is in our contract. So we, we just spent quite a bit of time on that, and we also did welcome our new members that the board approved last time. So, yeah, that was it.
Okay, Al?
Communications met, since that article in Foster's been, has been mentioned numerous times already, we hopefully are going to try to clarify the Foster's article. The second thing is that if you look.
Could I just, I mean, write a response to it, or?
Yes.
Okay, write, like a comment here?
Because it's like, the article is, is, the pieces are in there that make sense, but it, the article makes it sound like suddenly we're gonna be cutting a lot of jobs, and that's the headline, and that's really not what the long-range planning committee is saying, and, so it's a deceptive, it, it's inflammatory, so we're trying to, it'd be nice to clarify it so that we can say, here's what the numbers look like, and, you know, as, for example, if space may open up at the elementary school, we are really, one of our initiatives is all-day kindergarten, and that space would be occupied, so just to kind of clarify it and make it less alarmist. The second thing is that down under the closing actions on the future meetings, there's the Lee Safety Complex budget thing, where Jim presents there on the 5th, the Durham is the 12th, and Madbury is the 19th of January, and traditionally, it's nice if board members, particularly if you're a Lee person to show up in Lee, or a Durham person to show up in Durham, or a Madbury person to show up in Madbury to kind of support Jim. And then the third thing is that since we've just approved all the warrants, at the deliberative session, somebody has to stand up there and present each of the warrants, and so you should be thinking in your mind which one of those warrants you really want to present, and hopefully in January, we can figure out who wants to do what, and there's plenty of time then for you to do the research needed, and that's it.
I want number six.
I'll take one.
Other committee, other committee updates? Maria?
I was in California last week, so I missed a couple of meetings. But the, the concern of mine is that they end 68 hours of hunger. I can't find anywhere on, on the web. It's not listed under board-appointed committees yet. I've been told that it is somewhere, but I, I put it in the search field, and it didn't come up, so since it is board-appointed, it needs to be right there with the right of.
It does.
Right to know stuff.
Josh is writing it down.
Thank you.
Other committee? Public comments?
Looking on N68. I've been, I've been working with the MS26 forms, which are the summary, the budget summaries you guys generate every year, and trying to come up with a good budget metric would look like. Oh, I'm Dean Rubine from Lee. By the way, nice to meet you guys. You've been helping me, and it seems I've procrastinated long enough, so I might get the, at least the draft of the new one. So we can include that. What I think is a better, right now, we're using the operating budget as our, as our metric of how good we're doing, and you can see all the stuff, these warrant articles that you guys are recommending or not recommending, all the revenue, we're talking about tuition, is not, is not included in that, in those figures, and so I don't think it's a very good indication of either how much the tax burden is gonna be, or sort of how well you guys are doing your job. And so I've been looking at something that looks more like what I'm calling net, net costs, which would be the total, and you know, it would start with the total recommended article, so it would include not only the operating fund, but every other warrant article, you guys add the line that the school board recommends that, because you recommend it, you pay for, you get charged for it, and then you would subtract out all the, basically that's the way I'm looking at it now, you would subtract out all the local revenue. And so all the games where you're playing with the fund balance, where you're not giving the fund balance back to the taxpayer, that wouldn't count as revenue, that wouldn't count as, you know, taking the money, spending it, or, you know, you'd be putting it in a fund, but it wouldn't be going to lower next year's taxes. So anyway, I was slightly disappointed when I heard the, the number is big, 40.7, and it sounds like we're adding more staff than we're getting tuition money, so I wasn't all that thrilled with what I was hearing today, I haven't looked at it closely yet. I haven't looked at it closely yet, but I'll stop there. Thanks, guys.
David Taylor Durham. I just want to comment that the sheets that you were using for the warrant were not the same as what was on the website for the backup. I believe you got updated sheets, and they aren't over there. It was very hard for us in the audience to follow along with the wordsmithing of text that we didn't have in front of us. It'd be great if you guys could make sure that everyone who's in the audience can follow along with the conversation in detail. Thanks.
Other, other comments? Okay, we have listed, and I will go through all these, the upcoming regular meetings and the budget forums in the various towns. So, the next thing we have to do is a non-public session for the superintense evaluations, so could I have a motion to go into non-public session? And we'll need a roll call vote for that. Kenny?
I move under New Hampshire State Law RSA 91-A3 Roman numeral two, subscript C, which reads matters which, if discussed in public, would likely, and maybe not adversely affect, but it's written that way, the reputation of any person or other than a member of the public body itself, unless such a person requests an open meeting.
Okay. Motion to go into non-public by Kenny? Is there a second? Seconded by Al. Could I have a roll call vote, then, on this motion?
Denise Day, aye.
Sarah Farwell, aye.
Kenny wrote, Mary.
Al Holland, aye.
Tom Newkirk, aye.
Betsy R. Lay, aye.
Maria Bart, yes.
Megan Doody, aye.
Okay, so we're going to non-public?